Good morning.
Good morning.
The hearing board is in session and we're meeting in the Torrance City Hall Council Chambers. Time is about nine oh seven AM. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to avail themselves Spanish translation, it is available, see, just by finding one of the staff members and they'll set you up. Servicios de traducción a español están disponibles a favor de ver un miembro del personal. Today, the hearing board will consider a petition for a stipulated order for abatement against ExxonMobil Oil Corporation in case eleven eighty-three dash four ninety-four. Who is representing the executive officer this morning?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. Bay Gilchrist, representing the district, with me here at council table is Deputy Executive Officer Mosin Nizemi.
Thank you. And who's representing respondent ExxonMobil?
Good morning, Chairman Camarena, members of the board. Frances Keeler with Clyde &amp; Co. on behalf of ExxonMobil.
Thank you. The hearing board normally conducts its hearings in its dedicated hearing room in Diamond Bar during normal business hours, weekday business hours. Today, however, I wish to extend our appreciation to the city of Torrance for their hospitality and assistance in making the council chambers available to us so that we can hold this very important hearing on this date here in the city of Torrance for the convenience of the community. I particularly like to express our appreciation to City Manager Leroy Jackson and Management Associate Eleanor Jones, who have coordinated all the permitting with police department, fire department, community development, community relations, public safety, IT, and facilities. That's an awful lot of work. I would also like to recognize the untiring efforts of the district's public affairs staff in helping to bring this hearing to the community. A few details before we get started. If you are seated in the overflow area outside and you plan to testify, it may be wise to take a seat inside so you can have quicker access to the microphone when you are called If you do plan to testify, please notify a member of the district staff. They're all around the room. They'll assist you. And you will need to fill out a yellow request to testify card and hand it to one of the staff members. The same is true if you have any written testimony. We do require eight copies. A few more details. The hearing board is an independent, the hearing board is independent of the Air Quality Management District. We are not the district. We are a quasi judicial body and this is a judicial proceeding. It's not a workshop or a rally of any kind. Today, we will be considering a very narrow issue, the proposed, the stipulated order for abatement petition that is before us. I'd like to turn the mic over to Ms. Julie Prusak, our legal member on this board, who will more fully describe who we are, what our authority is, and how you, members of the public, may participate in today's hearing. Ms. Prusak?
Thank you. Good morning. As the chairman was stating, we are here today to hear a petition that has been brought before us for a stipulated order for abatement against ExxonMobil. We're also here today, in the community, to allow you, the interested members of the public, an opportunity to testify with regard to the petition for stipulated order for abatement that we are considering. And as the chairman also mentioned, this five-member hearing board that you see before you is not part of the South Coast Air Quality Management District. We are separate. We are independent. We are a quasi judicial body. The hearing board was established by state law. It's comprised of, excuse me, one medical member, one attorney, one engineer, and two general public members who have special expertise and are knowledgeable in air pollution control issues. This hearing board is authorized by state law to, among other things, issue orders for abatement. An order for abatement can require a company to take appropriate measures to stop violations of the air pollution rules and regulations, or to shut down the offending operation. An order for abatement has the force of law and it can be enforced by court order. Today, we are considering what is called a stipulated order for abatement against ExxonMobil. And this means that the district council, and ExxonMobil attorneys, and the parties, have gotten together and agreed to an order that both parties feel will allow the refinery to start up again with conditions to offset any impact on the environment and the public. It's our job to, it's our job today to determine whether the parties and you, as members of the affected public, present enough evidence to establish that we have good cause to grant the order. Now, in determining good cause, we consider all the relevant evidence and factors, including evidence of any alleged violations, the alleged sources of these violations at the facility, whether the conditions of the proposed order will bring the facility into compliance with all applicable rules, and how quickly that can occur. Now, to grant a stipulated order, we do not have to find today that there are any actual violations. This hearing is likely to be different than any government hearing you may have attended before unless you've attended any of our hearing board meetings or hearings. This is more like a court proceeding than a rulemaking or other administrative proceeding. And that's important to know when you make your comments today. And first and foremost, you will be making your comments under oath. We invite every person here to address the board today. And ultimately, though, we are constrained to consider in our deliberations only that testimony which is relevant to the issues in this case. So keep a few things in mind. Please speak only from your own personal experience and knowledge. Also, please pay attention to the openings and presentations of the parties and the plan for compliance. If you haven't seen a copy, I assume they are available, so you can comment specifically on that plan from your own knowledge and experience. And finally, keep in mind that the most relevant evidence will concern specific alleged rules violations in the petition and relate only to the restart of the refinery. And we can't address anything else today. So please contain your comments to the three-minute time limit for individuals and five-minute time limit if you represent a group. You cannot borrow from another person, and we will be strictly enforcing those limits today. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Prusak. Your mayor, Mr. Patrick J. Fury, would like to say a few words before we get started. After the mayor, I'll give any elected official who would like to speak an opportunity. In order to get through the day today, however, I'm going to ask everyone to limit their presentations, elected officials. If you can limit it to five minutes, that would be nice. And we had planned to allow three minutes for each member of the public to speak, however, because of the large number that we have today. And in order to get through, we're going to have to limit public members to two minutes, and the total time will also be limited. And, okay. Mayor Fury?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members, and staff of the South Coast AQMD. I am Torrance Mayor Patrick Fury, and on behalf of my colleagues on the city council and my city staff, I welcome you to the city of Torrance. On behalf of our community, I thank you for conducting this hearing in our city for the convenience of all affected. Before you get started, I would like to make a brief statement. The February two thousand and fifteen ExxonMobil Torrance refinery explosion and the subsequent incidents have been an eye-opener for our city. We are keenly aware of the concerns of our community, and we share many of those concerns. With the safety of our community a priority following the February two thousand and fifteen incident, we initiated meetings with refinery officials and safety experts numerous times seeking explanations and collecting up-to-date information on all the incidents. During frequent meetings with Brian Ablat, the general manager of ExxonMobil Torrance, we discussed the February two thousand and fifteen and subsequent incidents and steps necessary to restart the refinery on a number of occasions. We have also met with Mr. Jeffrey Dill, the Western Region President of PBF Energy, the proposed purchaser of the refinery, also discussing the safety concerns at the refinery. In summary, the city has taken the following actions to date. In March two thousand and fifteen, we met with Chemical Safety Board Chairperson Rafael Moreira Raso and his team to ensure the Chemical Board's goal was a comprehensive investigation to determine the cause of the incidents and what could be done to avoid a recurrence. We committed to work together to ensure the safety of the Torrance community, and we were advised that it could take up to eighteen months before a determination of cause by that body would be made and that we would be kept up to date on the findings. To keep the public informed and the lines of communications open, the community was invited to voice their concerns at a public workshop conducted by the city council in June of two thousand and fifteen. ExxonMobil officials were in attendance to explain the status of the refinery at that time and exactly what safety measures have been put into place or were being put into place. In October two thousand and fifteen, we had a phone conference with the current chairperson of the Chemical Safety Board, Ms. Vanessa Sutherland, and her team, discussing the Chemical Safety Board concerns and approaches to remedy them. In November two thousand and fifteen, we met with Chemical Safety Board Investigator Mark Wangard and Chemical Safety Board Attorney Advisor Jared Denton, again, discussing the procedure and what was occurring. The city provided the CBS with documentation and direction as to where additional information could be obtained by that body. On January thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, the Chemical Safety Board conducted a public hearing right here in our chambers to address the concerns or hear the concerns from our residents and other affected parties. With regard to some misconceptions that have been reported in the media, I have stated and restated, and I stated again, that the Torrance City Council has always been advised of any implementation of modified hydrofluoric acid. Since the incident, we have developed an informational page on torncaca.gov, our website, that the community can access by typing ExxonMobil in the search engine. The webpage contains information we have gathered on recent incidents thus far and links visitors to authority websites and displays upcoming meetings. The city, state, federal, and regional authorities have and are working towards our shared goal, to keep Torrance, its residents, visitors, and business communities safe. Given that the Chemical Safety Board has identified areas of concern, the city council is awaiting to hear from the Chemical Safety Board to immediately improve the safety of the refinery. It should be noted that the city is working collaboratively with the South Coast Air Quality Management District to evaluate modified hydrogen fluoride, hydrogen, hydrofluoric acid versus other feasible catalytic methodologies, with an estimated timeline of four to six months. Lastly, we are very pleased that the South Coast Air Quality Management District Board is having the hearing in it, in our city, to facilitate availability for all of our citizens. I want to thank you very much for being here today and look forward to the rest of the day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to call up a few other elected officials. Assemblymember David Harvey?
Hadley.
Hadley, sorry. Followed by Assemblyman Al Muratsuchi. Then, Hamilton Cloud from Congresswoman Maxine Waters' office, followed by Maureen Mauk. I can't hear you. I was reminded that we failed to administer the oath to those who will be testifying. So those who'll be testifying, elected officials and members of the public who wish to testify today, please rise to be sworn in. Raise your red hand. Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. And when you do speak, please state your name, spell it, and indicate for the audio record whether or not you took the oath. Mr. Hadley?
Terrific. Mr. Chairman, members, staff, and most importantly, residents of Torrance and the South Bay, thank you for being here this morning. My name is David Hadley, H-A-D-L-E-Y, and I'm proud to represent Torrance and most of the South Bay in the California State Assembly, and I have taken the oath this morning. I am not an engineer. I'm not a scientist. Most of the people in this room are not engineers or scientists. What we can do is we can, we can study what we've been informed of, and we can try to use our common sense, and we can try to judge the actions that we do understand. And, and too many of the actions in this case have been hard for the public, hard for the residents of Torrance, hard for me to understand. When the explosion took place in February of two thousand and fifteen, the response in the community, to the community, the information that was received by the community about the explosion and about our, our public safety response to this explosion was incomplete. It was late. Residents were not informed. I think that it was hard to imagine for many of us in Torrance and in the South Bay that, you know, one of the largest companies in the world, one of the largest private sector companies in the world, operating a, a dangerous asset in a crowded urban area, didn't have really a well-functioning communication response system in place. And that leads all of us, of course, to fear what else we don't know about the safety of the operation. We have, my office and I have been consulting extensively with stakeholders on this matter since February of two thousand and fifteen, but the managements of both ExxonMobil and PBF, the Torrance Refinery Action Alliance, homeowner associations around Torrance, organized labor representing the workers who would be the first to be harmed in an incident, another incident here at the refinery, as well as concerned members of the public. And this is obviously a complicated issue, but we only argue from what we understand. And the response after the explosion in February was hard for the public and for me to understand. And this proceeding has also been hard for many of us to understand, where the, the preliminary agreement has been released and announced before this public hearing has taken place. We have, as you can see today, we have hundreds of concerned residents who are here to express their views and share their information about living in proximity to this refinery. For, for the preliminary agreement to have been put in the public record before hearing from this public in Torrance is also hard for us to understand and to make sense of. And we are here, we hope, we'll, we hope we will receive significant answers today. This community is not going away. I personally, speaking for myself, I won't speak for everybody here, I want this refinery to operate. I want this refinery to provide the service that it operates, that it delivers to the community and to the state of California. But obviously, I also want it to be safe for the workers, the, the workers and contractors who are on site, as well as for the surrounding community. And when an agreement is stipulated before this public hearing, we wonder about the agenda of the parties in play. And we hope that the residents, the concerned citizens who are here today will be heard and that our concerns will be reflected in whatever decision the AQMD ultimately makes. We know this is not the only regulatory proceeding in place. We're not going away. We're going to follow this one and other proceedings related to this refinery very closely. So thank you for being here, and I just urge you, please, to listen to the residents who are here today and the experiences they're having. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Assemblyman Hadley. Yeah, I'm going to ask you a question for that. Ms. Prusak pointed out that this is not our stipulated order. This is a, the stipulation is a set of agreements regarding the process, as I understand it, that were arrived at by discussions between the engineers. It's now here before us to put it out in the open so that you can comment on it and for us to decide whether or not it is appropriate. Ms. Prusak, would you like to add some comments?
I would, because I, again, I think that most people, probably most everyone in this room, has not had experience before this board. And so we have this issue at a lot of our hearings where people are confused as to what is the procedure, who we are, and how everything will, will play out. So as Chairman Camarena mentioned, this is not, the, the order that we're considering today, we are also just seeing for the first time. We are also just hearing evidence on it for the first time. It is between the parties, and it is our job merely to hear it, to hear evidence about it, to hear comments from the public about your, any evidence that you have to add to it, your positions on it, and then for us to take all of that in public today, and hopefully today, make a decision as to whether we feel there's good cause to grant it. No decisions, no evidence, no conversations have been had outside of this public hearing today. This is the first time this hearing board is convening together to hear the matter and to discuss the matter. And everything that we hear, you hear, and everything that we deliberate on and discuss, you will also hear. So just to be clear on that.
Thank you, Ms. Prusak. Mr. Gilchrist, Ms. Keeler, the public witnesses, as you all know, are subject to questioning by the attorneys from both sides and also by the members of the hearing board. Because of the large number of witnesses that we anticipate today, I'm going to not call on you and ask you if you wish to ask questions of the witnesses. I will call on you if you so indicate that you have a question, but otherwise, we'll just skip that one step. The next speaker will be Assemblyman Al Muratsuchi.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Al Muratsuchi, and for the record, I am the former assembly member representing the South Bay, as well as a former school board member. I am here because my number-one concern is the protection of our families, our neighborhoods, and our children. On the day of the explosion in February of two thousand and fifteen, I lived less than two miles from the refinery. I saw the white dust falling in my neighborhood. And since then, the Torrance community has seen a constant drumbeat of information related to violations, starting with the hydrofluoric acid, the workplace safety violations, the willful workplace safety violations found by state regulators, the findings of the federal regulators, the U.S. Chemical Safety Board, related to the concerns of the refinery. There is a crisis of confidence with the ExxonMobil refinery. And I am most concerned about, I know the subject matter of today's hearing is focusing on the order for abatement as it relates to the allowance of emissions, the emissions of toxins into our air, into our surrounding neighborhoods and community. I also want to make clear that I am not calling for shutting down the refinery. I know that this room is full of ExxonMobil refinery employees. We are not talking about eliminating their jobs. But what we are talking about is to make sure that we are protecting our children, our families, our community. And I ask you to listen to all the testimony and to listen to where the people are coming from, whether they're employees or whether they're parents, residents, community members, because, again, we are asking you to protect our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Hamilton Cloud from the Maxine Waters, Congresswoman Maxine Waters' office.
I have a copy of the statement here.
Would you hand it to the clerk, please?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Hamilton Cloud, and I am Director of Special Projects for Congresswoman Maxine Waters, and I have taken the swearing-in. Congresswoman Waters would have been here today to deliver this statement herself, but her schedule required her to be out of town. This is her statement. Esteemed members of the board, I have heard from many of my constituents who live in the area surrounding ExxonMobil's Torrance refinery that they have serious conditions about the reported agreement between ExxonMobil and the South Coast Air Quality Management District, which would allow ExxonMobil to restart the refinery's fluid catalytic cracking unit. While I understand that this agreement is just being officially released to the public, it has nevertheless been reported by various media. The proposed agreement allows ExxonMobil to significantly exceed pollution limits at the refinery, and it consequently jeopardizes the health and safety of residents of the surrounding community. The agreement's Findings of Fact section states that ExxonMobil's plans to restart the unit will violate numerous AQMD rules and permit conditions. According to Finding of Fact Number Thirty, these violations will result in unmitigated excess emissions in the amounts of one hundred and forty-three pounds of nitrogen oxides, one hundred and forty-four pounds of carbon monoxide, eight hundred and forty-eight pounds of particulate matter, and two hundred and twenty-four pounds of PM-10 particulate matter. I question the wisdom of any agreement that would allow emissions in excess of legal limits. My constituents want to be reassured by the AQMD that the air they breathe and the air their children breathe every day is not going to harm them. I am also concerned that local officials and residents have not had sufficient opportunity to examine this agreement and provide informed comments. I therefore join with the residents of the community to urge the hearing board of the South Coast AQMD not to make any decision on this agreement today. Furthermore, I urge the AQMD to require ExxonMobil to comply with all applicable laws and regulations for the good of the community. I understand the concerns about the daily loss of revenues and the possible loss of jobs at ExxonMobil if the company is not able to restart the refinery's FCCU. However, we must always err on the side of safety. The costs of not restarting the FCCU under these proposed conditions pale in comparison to the potential risks to the health and safety of the South Bay. Thank you.
Mr. Olson has a question for you.
Sir, do you know if anyone made Congresswoman Waters aware that the proposed agreement that we're considering today was posted on the district's website, has been for the past couple days, and was accessible publicly that way?
Yes, but she considered that not an adequate way of presenting it to the public.
I understand.
And, and she felt that two or three days of advance notice was not adequate for people to really examine it and, and develop opinions about the effect it's going to have on the community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maureen Mauk, City Commissioner, City of Torrance.
Hello, my name's Maureen Mauk, M-A-U-K, and I have taken the oath. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. I'm here as a City of Torrance Commissioner, a member of ExxonMobil's Community Advisory Panel for the past two years, a mom. Panel for the past two years, a mom, two, one, and three-year-old living a mile away. And I also stand here today as a representative of a network of over 1,000 South Bay moms who could not attend today's hearing, given the needs and schedules of their children. I've submitted this document to you detailing many of their personal responses and concerns for your review. First, I'd like to request a continuance to this hearing, as so much of the information was only made public over the past three days. I'm still awaiting information requests myself, and was told yesterday afternoon by one of the lab assistants at the AQMD that they can't remove the redactions, and the person who has all the data is on vacation. How can we be asked to turn around our thoughts when the AQMD can't even turn around the information? I ask that you give community members time to review all the facts in this potentially life-altering choice, so that no one is getting backed into a corner by ExxonMobil. Their negligence led to the blast, and yes, they are losing money each day they're not operating, and they're threatening their workers' jobs. But bottom-line profits should not come at the expense of worker, community, and environmental health. But even with the limited amount of time and information we've had, here are some of the things that we need. One, ample notification by ExxonMobil prior to all emissions outbursts and flaring, so that citizens and schools have the opportunity to seek shelter, evacuate, and relocate. Two, vouchers or reimbursement by ExxonMobil for our relocation, and full communication of that reimbursement to area residents, hospitals, and elderly facilities. Three, air quality monitors on the fence lines surrounding ExxonMobil with real-time data, as was done in the Vernon-exide case. Four, full disclosure, past, present, and future of all emissions data from the stacks per the Title V permits. And finally, because it's not ExxonMobil workers versus the tree huggers, I, we, stand here today to request that ExxonMobil provide hazardous duty pay for all the refinery workers as they will be at Ground Zero, working amidst obnoxious emissions for protracted amounts of time. Street sweeping twice a day is not enough to protect those workers. Also, reviewing ExxonMobil's proposed startup conditions. On Number 14, ExxonMobil should notify the district at their 1-800 number within 30 minutes of any odor complaints from the public. Why is the onus on the neighbors to be the watchdogs? What happens when the refinery chooses to open the floodgates in the dark of the night? Where is the logic? It reeks of regulatory capture. Number 21 of the proposed startup conditions. Emissions data reported seven days after completion, seven days after everyone has breathed that air pollution. This raises a question of how we measure the quality of air here in the South Bay. How could we review the results of the refinery's unmitigated air pollution, given that the closest air monitoring stations are in Compton and Long Beach currently? Accountability. Why should we trust ExxonMobil and empower their flagrant request to blow unmitigated air pollution over the South Bay, so they can get fully operational again and complete their sale to PBF? If a measure of society is how we treat our most vulnerable, there is no more clear expression of failure than what seems to be happening at the refinery. As one of the mothers who contributed to that document puts it, "It is unethical to take away a mother's right to keep her children safe." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public official who wishes to speak? Apparently not. Thank you very much. We're off the record for a second. We've received a large number of documents, which I will mark as exhibits and for the record. The first one is a citizen petition, it's titled "Citizen Petition for Additional Enforcement Actions in the Interest of Public Health." It's dated, stamped, March 15, 2016. We'll mark that as Public Exhibit Number 1. We have the written statement from Congresswoman Maxine Waters. We'll mark that as Public Exhibit Number 2. Following that, a multi-page document from the Moms of South Bay. It's dated April 2, 2016. That will be Public Exhibit Number 3. And we have a multi-page document submitted by Ms. Mauk. On the cover is an email from Ms. Mauk to the Clerk of the Board, Friday, April 1, 2016. That'll be Public Exhibit Number 4. We also have about, maybe close to 200 other pages of written material submitted by members of the public, which we will mark as public exhibits later on today when I get a good number as to how many there are. I'd like to mention the rest of the process today. We are going to hear opening statements from the attorneys for the district and for ExxonMobil. And following that, we will then go to the district for presentation of their witnesses and evidence. The witnesses will be subject to cross-examination by the attorney for ExxonMobil, as well as this board. When that is done, ExxonMobil will present any evidence, witnesses it wishes to present, and those witnesses too will be subject to cross-examination by Mr. Gilchrist for the district, as well as this board. I urge you to listen very carefully to what the witnesses and the evidence is, so that following that, I will then give an opportunity to members of the public who wish to testify, an opportunity to speak. And as Ms. Prusak indicated, this is a very narrow issue that is before us, and you will be most effective if you direct your statements to the evidence that we will have heard by that time. It will be necessary for me to limit the amount of time for each member of the public to speak to two minutes, so that it gives each member of the public, or as many members of the public, an opportunity to speak before the end of the day today. I will also be limiting the total number, the total amount of time that we devote to the public testimony in order to attempt to reach a conclusion decision today. After all of the testimony is in, we will hear closing statements from the parties, and the board will deliberate. Our deliberation will be here, in public. Whether it is today or some other day, the deliberation will be in public. You will know how we, or what we think of the evidence we will have heard. You will know the reasons for our decision. With that, I'm going to ask Mr. Gilchrist to make an opening statement. Mr. Gilchrist and Ms. Keeler. As I read the petition for an order for abatement, it occurred to me as to why this is not a petition for a variance instead of an order for abatement. The refinery startups occur throughout this basin several times a year. And as the refinery start up, and as the public will hear, during the startup process, there can be some excess emissions as everything gets balanced out. Those excess emissions may be violations, and the, those are addressed through the variance process. The order for abatement authority that I read in the Health and Safety Code and in the rules of the district speak about existing, at least my interpretation, existing violations. As I understand it, the parties have indicated that there is no existing violations, but there may be some as the startup process occurs. So, if you would, please educate me on why we have an order for abatement as opposed to a variance today in your opening. Mr. Gilchrist.
Mr. Chair, Board Members. Electrostatic precipitators are air pollution control devices. Refineries use electrostatic precipitators to control a type of air pollution called particulate matter. But electrostatic precipitators are also an ignition source. Explosions can occur when a flammable material reaches an ignition source. Hydrocarbons are flammable. Because electrostatic precipitators, or ESPs, are an ignition source, it is crucial that flammable hydrocarbons do not reach active electrostatic precipitators. Otherwise, explosions can occur. On February 18, 2015, just last year, flammable hydrocarbons entered ExxonMobil's active electrostatic precipitators. This caused an explosion that damaged the electrostatic precipitators that control particulate matter. As a result, the particulate matter that was in those electrostatic precipitators were deposited throughout the surrounding Torrance community, as one of the witnesses previously testified to. The Chemical Safety Board, ExxonMobil's own investigation, and the district's review of the explosion all conclude that the explosion was caused by hydrocarbons entering an active or energized ESP. The refinery has been mostly shut down since then. The electrostatic precipitators, or ESPs for short, have been fixed. The ESPs control pollution emissions associated with ExxonMobil's Fluidized Catalytic Cracking Unit, or FCCU for short. The Fluidized Catalytic Cracking Unit is a key component of blending gasoline at the Torrance refinery. ExxonMobil has indicated that it is prepared to restart its refinery, and it has also indicated that it has altered its procedure for starting up its Fluidized Catalytic Cracking Unit. These altered procedures are designed to prevent another explosion, but they will result in additional emissions that would not have otherwise occurred. The district wants to impose enforceable conditions on ExxonMobil's startup to minimize and mitigate the additional emissions to the most feasible extent, while also recognizing the need to minimize the chance of another explosion. To prevent another explosion caused by hydrocarbons again entering into an active ESP, ExxonMobil is seeking to operate during startup for approximately six hours without the ESPs being fully energized. There will be approximately two hours of that six-hour period when the ESPs would be essentially partially energized. It is during this period that hydrocarbons could be present in the system and able to enter an active electrostatic precipitator. As the hearing board knows and just alluded to, it is relatively common for refineries to receive regulatory relief from district rules and permit conditions when restarting A key distinction here is that those other startups with other refineries and this refinery's prior startups were generally done through what's known as the variance procedure. In order to obtain relief under a variance procedure, an entity needs to show that the cause of the violation or the reason of the violation is beyond their reasonable control. It is the district's view that preventing ExxonMobil's ESPs from exploding is not beyond their reasonable control. The district is also aware that generally, orders for abatement involve ongoing violations. However, there are situations in which there are going to be violations or there are anticipated violations. I have a couple of examples. A prior hearing board precedent that occurred when there was not an ongoing violation, but the violation was ongoing, excuse me, was essentially going to occur or inevitable. in Brookfield Properties, Case Number 5930-1, it involved an order for abatement that was essentially violations that were anticipated to occur in the future that were essentially Another example is Exide Technologies, which had stated that it was going to be, remain shut down if it did not receive variance relief. But the board issued an order for abatement even though the facility had stated that it would not be operating, because it knew that violations could be imminent, and it wanted to enforce imposable conditions. Those were stipulated orders. The Health and Safety Code makes clear that the board need not find an active or ongoing violation if there is a stipulated order for abatement. The other part of ExxonMobil's restart, other than relating to the ESP, are similar to those that the hearing board has seen before. I have on the board what's been, what will be marked as Exhibit 2. It is a diagram of ExxonMobil's relevant air pollution control devices. I will briefly outline what will happen during those six hours that ExxonMobil would operate without the electrostatic precipitators fully energized. Please look at the device marked Regenerator to the left of the middle of the screen. There are two lines marked Torch Oil that are going into the bottom of the Regenerator. During the startup period, when the ESPs are turned off, the Regenerator will be at about 750 degrees Fahrenheit. ExxonMobil would then put torch oil, which is flammable, into the Regenerator. You see the black port of the Regenerator, that is the area where the torch oil would be placed. And again, the torch oil is flammable. They would put the torch oil into the Regenerator until it reaches a temperature of at least 1,200 degrees. Until it reaches that 1,200 degrees, some torch oil might not be fully combusted in the Regenerator and could proceed downstream, if you follow the flow diagram, to the bottom right-hand portion where the letters ESP are. That is the location of the electrostatic precipitator. Remember, the ESPs, if energized, are an ignition source. Adding the torch oil into the Regenerator will raise the temperature about 100 to 150 degrees every hour. Once the temperature reaches 1,200 degrees, the torch oil would be fully combusted. ExxonMobil would then begin to re-energize its ESPs. The entire period will last approximately six hours. During this approximate six-hour time period, there will be approximately 850 pounds of excess PM emissions. Under the proposed order, ExxonMobil would be required to take several steps to minimize its emissions. It would also be required to take several steps to mitigate or offset its excess emissions. Those steps will mitigate approximately 215 or 216 pounds of PM during that six-hour In addition, ExxonMobil, under the proposed order, would be required to continue those mitigating measures beyond this six-hour window. And this is what will be marked as Exhibit 3, Mr. Chair. So, I'd like to point out what that means.
Mr. Gilchrist?
Yes.
I don't see the table in our package. Can you?
I believe the clerk is about to hand those to you, Mr. Chair.
While the clerk is handing those items out, the board has a package of exhibits from the district, date stamped March 30th, 2016. Within it are Exhibits 1 and 2, and they'll be so marked. The table that's just been handed to us, which is the same as the table on the screen, will be Exhibit Number 3. You may continue, Mr. Gilchrist.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. ExxonMobil, under the proposed order, would be required to continue doing these mitigating measures throughout the order for abatement. The chart that you see on the screen is just for the six-hour period in which the ESP would not be fully energized, and we chose to only focus on that six-hour period so that the board and the public would know the amount of emissions that would be occurring during that specific time period as a result of not having the ESP fully energized. I do want to point out, however, that the mitigation measures that would result in approximately 216 pounds of PM being mitigated during that six-hour period, those mitigating measures would continue throughout the abatement period. So, for example, if you look at a 24-hour period, the amount of mitigations coming from ExxonMobil doing steps that it would otherwise be allowed to do or refusing to do those things that they would otherwise be allowed to do, those 216 pounds of PM emissions for that six-hour period, if you multiply that by four for a 24-hour day, it actually is more than the unmitigated excess emissions. What that means is that for the 24 hours involving the startup of the ESP, we do not anticipate excess PM emissions. But to be conservative and to emphasize what will occur during the period that the ESPs will not be fully energized, the district is focusing primarily on the mitigation reductions that will occur during that six-hour period. Regarding other pollutants, there would be approximately 144 pounds of excess CO emissions. ExxonMobil will take steps under the proposed order to mitigate or minimize that CO. There will also be about 467 pounds of oxides of nitrogen, also known as NOx, which is in the fourth row. Those would occur during a 12-hour period when the selective catalytic unit is bypassed, which, as the board knows, is common during startup procedures. The NOx emissions during this 12-hour window, so for NOx that is a 12-hour period, would be offset by approximately 130 pounds by mitigation measures that would be required by this order. To be clear, those mitigating measures would continue throughout the order for abatement period. So, for example, if you looked at a 24-hour period, the amount of mitigation measures would be approximately 260 pounds of NOx. If you looked at it over two days, approximately 520 pounds of NOx. If you looked at it three days, approximately 780 pounds of NOx. And again, these would come about from ExxonMobil shutting down devices that it would otherwise be able to use or making changes that it would otherwise not be required to make. But again, to be conservative, the district is focusing primarily for NOx on the mitigation measures that would occur during that 12-hour period. In conclusion, Mr. Chair, Board members, members of the public, the district believes that the proposed order balances the safe startup of ExxonMobil's fluidized catalytic cracking unit with enforceable conditions that will mitigate and minimize excess emissions from the new startup procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist. Ms. Keeler?
Good morning, Chairman Camarena, members of the board. Mr. Gilchrist has, in his opening, summarized all of the major points that I think need to be emphasized in the opening. Therefore, I will just, I will briefly summarize that ExxonMobil and the district are here today in the stipulated order of abatement to present a plan with considerable conditions that would allow ExxonMobil, excuse me, allow the refinery to safely resume operations while minimizing any impact on the environment to the maximum extent feasible. In the testimony today, you will hear that ExxonMobil has been using the downtime to complete a necessary turnaround on the FCC, has instituted new operational procedures, and has conducted training and multi-layers of the organization to ensure that everyone fully performs the new operations safely and reliably. And during startup, the refinery will be adding extra personnel to ensure the highest level of safety. As Mr. Gilchrist pointed out, the conditions include both operational measures and other mitigation measures that will, again, mitigate the excess emissions for that six-hour period as of particulate emissions to the maximum extent feasible. Those emission reductions and mitigations will occur for extended periods throughout the abatement order period. I do want to distinguish that the cooling towers were permanent and that the mitigation that was instituted months before in anticipation of this startup. Some of the other mitigation will not last the entire duration of the startup, but will definitely cover all the periods where you have that six-hour emissions throughout that entire day, the mitigation will continue for an extended period. The petition, again, as Mr. Gilchrist pointed out, the petition is a stipulated order of abatement. The hearing board does not need to find that they will be in violation, and the testimony today will provide all of the evidence necessary for the hearing board to support a finding of good cause and therefore to grant the stipulated order of abatement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keeler. Mr. Gilchrist, you have one or more witnesses.
The district has one witness.
Same question for Ms. Keeler.
We have one witness. We do have some other witnesses prepared. If the hearing board has questions that this witness cannot answer.
Thank you. Mr. Gilchrist, you may present your first witness.
May we take a brief recess, Mr. Chair, approximately five minutes?
We'll give you ten.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gilchrist.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask that the screen that was there before, I'm not asking you to do that, Mr. Chair. So I can proceed, but I'd just like to ask that that occur.
We're gonna go off the record for a moment, get that screen back up. While the person who absconded with the screen is found, we'll proceed, Mr. Gilchrist.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Nazemi, could you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. Mohsen, M-O-H-S-E-N, last name Nazemi, N-A-Z-E-M-I.
Have you taken the oath?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Nazemi, are you employed?
Yes, I am.
Where are you employed?
I'm employed at South Coast Air Quality Management District.
What is your current position at the AQMD?
I'm the Deputy Executive Officer for the Office of Engineering and Compliance.
How long have you been in this position, approximately?
I've been employed for 37 years, but I've been holding the position of Deputy Executive Officer since 2007.
Could you give us a brief description of what your duties as a Deputy Executive Officer require?
Sure. I'm in charge of all permitting and enforcement related to all the stationary sources within our jurisdiction, which is a four-county region, all of Orange County, and then non-desert portions of Sanbury, New Riverside, and Los Angeles Counties. This constitutes over 27,000 stationary resources and many other portable and other non-permitted sources.
Prior to working at the AQMD, do you have other work experience that's relevant?
Yes, prior to working at the AQMD, I worked at a company that manufactured a fluidized catalytic cracking unit and hydrodesulfurization catalysts.
I'd like to briefly cover your educational background. Do you have a college degree?
Yes, I do.
Where did you attend college?
I received a Bachelor of Science in Chemical Engineering from Cal State University Long Beach and a Master's of Science in Chemical Engineering from UCLA. And I did my thesis in selective catalytic reduction technologies.
Do you have any professional licenses?
Yes, I hold a professional engineering license in chemical engineering from the state of California.
As part of your duties, are you generally familiar with AQMD rules related to oil refineries?
Yes, I am.
As part of your duties, have you visited oil refineries?
Many have, yes.
Have you developed district rules that apply to refineries or helped develop rules that apply to refineries?
Yes, prior to my position as Deputy Executive Officer, I was Senior Manager in Charge of Rule Development, Permitting and Enforcement relative to refinery and Energy Operations, and I did develop rules at that position, under that position.
And as part of your current position, have you enforced or helped to enforce rules that apply to refineries?
Yes, I have.
Have you issued or approved the issuance of permits to refineries?
Yes, my, part of my responsibility as Deputy Executive Officer is to oversee and approve all the permits issued to stationary resources.
Are you familiar with the term Title V permit?
Yes, Title V refers to the Title V of the Federal Clean Air Act, and it is a provision that in 1990 was adopted into the Clean Air Act to require major sources as defined by the attainment status of each region to obtain an operating permit consistent throughout the country. And in our region, major sources definition is different than the rest of the country because of our non-attainment status frozen, which is extreme ozone. So our source defined definition for the sources of major pollutants is 10 tons per year of nitrogen oxide or hydrocarbons, whereas in most the rest of the country, that definition is for sources that emit, have the potential to emit 100 tons of nitrogen oxides or organics.
And you've reviewed Title V permits for oil refineries, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you familiar with the Are you familiar with the ExxonMobil refinery located in Torrance?
Yes, I am.
Have you visited this refinery?
At least a half dozen times in the last year and a half.
Approximately, when is the last time you visited this refinery?
In February of 2016.
Do you know whether this refinery has a Title V permit?
Yes, the refinery does have a Title V permit, yes.
And are you familiar with the refinery's Title V permit?
Yes, I have reviewed it.
Have you previously read the petition for an order for abatement on this matter?
Yes, I have.
And are you familiar with its contents?
Yes, I am.
Have you previously read the proposed findings and decisions in this matter?
Yes, I have.
And are you familiar with its contents?
Yes, I am.
Does ExxonMobil's Torrance refinery have devices that serve to control air pollution?
They have many devices that either reduce or control the air pollution from their processes units.
And are you generally familiar with those devices?
Yes.
Are you familiar with devices known as fluid catalytic cracking units? It sounds like you had some previous experience even before the district, but as part of your duties now, are you familiar with them?
Yes, fluid catalytic cracking unit, or FCCU, is one of the central process units within each refinery. And the purpose of the unit is to basically take heavy oil and convert it into lighter products. So, what it does, it cracks heavy crude oil, gas oil, into smaller hydrocarbon chains, so the larger chains are broken up. And then they use the smaller chains to produce gasoline blend stock or other fuels.
Do you know whether this refinery has a fluid catalytic cracking unit?
Yes, it does.
I'd like you to take a look at what's been marked as Exhibit 2. Do you recognize it?
Yes, I do.
What is it?
This actually is part of the FCCU, or Fluid Catalytic Cracking Unit. Even though it's called FCCU, it consists of many different systems or units within the Fluid Catalytic Cracking Units. But this diagram shows what I would call a portion of the FCCU, but not the whole thing.
Mr. Chair, the district moves to Exhibit 2 and to evidence.
Any objection, Mr. Gilchrist?
We have none.
Exhibit 2 is in evidence.
Okay, I believe you stated, well, are you familiar with the air pollution control system associated with the fluid catalytic cracking unit?
Yes.
Are you familiar with electrostatic precipitators?
Yes, electrostatic precipitator, ESP for short, is a device that controls fine particulate emissions from exhaust stream and removes the particulates by putting a negative charge on the particles and then pass them through a number of plates that are positively charged. And therefore, the particles would be attracted to, which carry the negative charge are attracted to the plates. And then that fashion are removed from the exhaust stream before released into the atmosphere.
Does the air pollution control system for ExxonMobil's Fluid Catalytic Cracking Unit include electrostatic precipitators?
Yes, it does.
Are there any other air pollution control devices? After the ESP?
Yes, there is a selective catalytic reduction, or SCR, that is also controls nitrogen oxide pollutants from the exhaust stream before they're released into the air.
As part of your duties at the AQMD, are you involved with overseeing the investigations of explosions at refineries?
My duties include both permitting and enforcement, and as part of my enforcement duties, my staff and myself do investigate cases where there is violation of district rules, including explosions or fires at various facilities.
On or about February 18th, 2015, did you learn of an explosion at the ExxonMobil facility in Torrance?
Yes, I did.
Are you familiar with an entity known as the Chemical Safety Board?
Yes, I'm familiar with CSP.
Are you familiar with what the Chemical Safety Board determined caused the explosion?
Yes, I've discussed this with CSP staff and also attended the January hearing that was mentioned by Mayor at this same location here in this room.
Are you familiar with what ExxonMobil's internal review determined caused the explosion?
Yes, in May of last year, ExxonMobil also shared their internal investigation results with me as well.
Did they essentially come to the same conclusion?
I think in terms of the cause of the explosion, I think it was all the same, that it was a result of hydrocarbons finding their way into the ESP while the ESP was still energized.
And do you concur with that conclusion?
Yes, I do.
What are the three elements that lead to combustion or explosion?
In order to have a combustion environment, you have to have a flammable or combustible material. There needs to be air present in order to form the combustion. And then there needs to be a source of ignition of some sort. In this case, the combustibles would be the hydrocarbons. The air is in the system, and the source of ignition would be an electrically charged ESP.
Do other refineries undergo startups of fluid catalytic cracking units?
Yes, there are two reasons that an FCC unit may be shut down and then have to be restarted again. One is a general, what's called turnaround, which is depending on the refinery and the age of the unit, every four to five years, every refinery shuts down their FCCU. And they go through a full maintenance and repair of any necessary parts of the FCCU. They also do investigations to see if there is anything that needs to be replaced. The other reason that the FCCU may be shut down is during its actual operation, there may be emergency incidents or breakdowns that would cause the FCCU to go down, such as the breakdown in the air blower, main air blower, or other parts of the FCCU, as I mentioned. And in order to then start the unit backup, there is a startup process that gradually brings the unit back up to full operation.
That startup process that you mentioned, do refineries often seek regulatory relief for variance coverage for violations that might occur during that startup period?
That's generally the case. And the reason for that is that as the unit is brought up to full operation, there are times where there is not a steady-state operation. And therefore, the products that are formed in the startup process are not fully combusted or controlled. And also, the temperature of the exhaust, as I mentioned earlier, one of the control systems for FCCU is the selective catalytic reduction that removes nitrogen oxides. However, the SCR, called less short, the SCR, is only effective if the temperature is above certain levels of 500 degrees. So, in order to be able to remove the ox, the temperature has to reach above those 500-degree temperatures. So, there are periods of time that as you're bringing a unit up, that there are circumstances that you will not be either employing the full pollution control system or being able to, even if they are employed, to control the pollution until it reaches a steady state.
Mr. Nazimi, aside from the period of de-energizing the ESPs and re-energizing the ESPs and putting the torch oil into the regenerator to raise the temperature to 1,200 degrees, is it your understanding that the remaining conditions in the proposed order for abatement are similar to startups at most other refineries?
Yes.
As part of the proposed order for abatement, would ExxonMobil need to de-energize the ESPs during the startup period?
The startup period is actually a long...
Let me clarify that. During the startup of the FCCU, would ExxonMobil need to de-energize the ESPs during the startup of the FCCU?
Only during part of that process, as I was gonna say, the startup process is a long process, and it does begin with, depending on how much work has been done on the FCCU during the period that it was shut down, starts with drying out the refractory inside the units. And maybe I should mention, the FCCU consists of different parts. And what we have on the drawing here, it just shows the reactor and the regenerator portion of the FCCU. There is also a column to the left that is not shown in this diagram, which is the fractionation column, that is also part of the FCCU. So, depending on what kind of repair is done when these, all of these units are down, there may be a need to first dry out the refractory in the FCCU system. And then after that, the process begins with loading the catalyst into the system, floating the catalyst, and then raising the temperature of the catalyst from, you know, atmospheric temperature up to 1,200. So, long answer to your question, the period during which ExxonMobil has proposed to de-energize the ESP is only the period where the catalyst is gonna be heated from 750 degrees of... the ESP is only the period where the catalyst is going to be heated from 750 degrees approximately to 1,200 degrees, while the process requires introduction of fuel that's referred to as torch oil here to increase that temperature gap in order to reach a steady state.
And what would ExxonMobil be attempting to accomplish or avoid during this period by doing that?
The reason their proposal is not to have the ESP energized during that period is because the heating of the catalyst from zero to 750, not zero, but from atmospheric temperature to 750 degrees is done utilizing heaters that are associated with the fluid catalytic cracking units. The heaters have burners and burners have flame eyes and other controls. So at any time, you can be certain whether or not the flame is on and if there is a complete combustion taking place. However, when the torch oil is introduced into the, in this case, this regenerator, there is no source of ignition other than the temperature inside the regenerator. It's almost like a concept of a diesel engine in your car. As you may know, if you have a gasoline engine, you have to have a spark in order to have combustion in the cylinder. If you operate a diesel engine, there is no spark ignition, but the pressure and temperature inside the cylinder will actually ignite the fuel. That's the same concept that's going to be used in the regenerator when the torch oil is introduced at 750 degrees. The temperature inside the regenerator will actually ignite the torch oil. However, in that process, because there is no direct flame, there is possibility that some of the torch oil may not be fully combusted in the regenerator. And since the exhaust from the regenerator passes through the lines that are shown on the diagram and into the ESP, if the ESP is charged during that period, then there is a possibility that some unburned hydrocarbons will get into the ESP. And again, source of ignition, flammable and air could cause combustion or explosion in the ESP.
And because of that explosion risk, has ExxonMobil proposed de-energizing the ESPs before it puts torch oil into the regenerator?
Yes, the process of burning torch oil is approximately four hours. And the reason it is four hours is because, just like any other combustion device, you can't raise the temperature too rapidly because you'll damage the metallurgy within any unit. So the temperature increase gradually in the regenerator using torch oil is around 150 degrees per hour. And in order to reach from 750 to 1,200, you need about three to four hours of burning torch oil to reach that temperature. So the process that engages, or how we came up with the six hours, it takes one hour approximately to de-energize the ESP. And this ESP is actually like a five-story building, if you have seen it driving on Crenshaw Boulevard. And it's actually two separate ESP units and consists of multiple sections. And so the way it's de-energized, each section is de-energized at a time, there are 24 different sections, over 1,000 plates within that ESP. And that's why it takes about an hour to completely de-energize the ESP. And that's partially still in operation because you don't de-energize all the plates at once, but you go through section at a time. And then it takes the same amount of time or process to re-energize the ESP. And in order to bring it back up again, it approximately takes about an hour. So there is a four-hour period where there is no ESP in use. And then the two hours at the beginning and at the end of this process where some of the plates within the ESP are operating, but not all.
And how would ExxonMobil determine whether the torch oil has been completely combusted?
You can detect that by measuring both oxygen and carbon monoxide prior to entering into the ESP. So if you have high levels of carbon monoxide, for example, or CO, it's an indication that there is incomplete combustion and potential presence of hydrocarbons still in this stream. And also, oxygen is another parameter that can be measured and detected. And I believe that those are the two parameters that will specifically be used in addition to other criteria that ExxonMobil uses for detecting the hydrocarbons going into ESP.
And once those conditions were met, the plan would be to turn the ESPs back on or to re-energize the ESPs?
Yes, once the temperature in the regenerator is stabilized at 1,200 degrees and the carbon monoxide and oxygen levels are in the proper zone, then the ESP will be re-energized.
Is not having the ESPs fully energized for this six-hour period expected to result in excess PM emissions?
Compared to operating the ESP, yes, because again, the function of the ESP is to remove particles from the exhaust stream. And if it's not fully charged or not in charge at all, then there will be excess particulate emissions.
I'd like you to take a look at what's been marked as Exhibit 3. Do you recognize it?
Yes, I do.
What is it?
This is a summary of the excess emissions that would occur during the startup procedures, both for particulates, carbon monoxide, and nitrogen oxide. And it also shows what reductions ExxonMobil has proposed to create during the startup procedure to offset the excess emissions.
Mr. Chair, the district moves to admit Exhibit 3 and 10 evidence.
Ms. Gilchrist, no objection?
No objection.
Exhibit 3 is in evidence.
Has the district evaluated the excess PM emissions expected during this six-hour period?
Yes.
What is the district's evaluation reveal would be the estimated excess emissions?
For particulates, the excess emissions occurs during the six-hour period where the ESP is not energized. And they're shown in form of two different pollutants. PM refers to particulate matter of any size, and PM10 refers to the finer particulate matters. That's a particulate matter that has a 10 micron or micro millimeter diameter or smaller. And those are estimated amounts of emissions during this six-hour period, although we are also requiring ExxonMobil to conduct multiple source tests during this period to also measure these emissions, since none of the refineries in the past have ever measured emissions during the startup procedure. We think this is a good opportunity to actually verify the numbers. As far as the other pollutants, carbon monoxide and nitrogen oxide are concerned, the carbon monoxide, excess emissions are associated again with the period when torch oil is being burned in the regenerator. And if the combustion is not complete, you will get some excess carbon monoxide generated. And then the nitrogen oxide, so for PM and carbon monoxide, the period is six hours potentially. For the nitrogen oxide, the period is a little longer. And again, it's due to the fact that the exhaust temperature needs to reach 500 degrees. And also, SCR catalyst is a type of a unit that if you have plugging or material dust in the exhaust stream, that'll plug the catalyst and will make it inoperable. So that period is 12 hours. And the excess emissions for nitrogen oxide was calculated based on 12 hours.
Regarding the time period that the ESP would not be fully de-energized, I believe you previously testified that that would be about approximately six hours, right?
Yes.
Was the initial period that ExxonMobil proposed or discussed operating with the ESPs greater than that?
The initial proposal that, well, let me take a step back. We were approached in February, initially for the restart of the FCCU. And initially, ExxonMobil wanted to eliminate any possible explosion of the ESP. And their initial proposal was to, for the 48 hours of the startup, not to operate the ESP.
Would that have resulted in significantly more emissions?
It would have, yes.
What was the district's reaction to that initial proposal?
Our reaction was to minimize emissions to the maximum extent feasible during this restart without causing any safety issues. So we began working on the startup procedure with ExxonMobil and identified each step of the process and tried to see what potential sources of hydrocarbon may exist and asked ExxonMobil to revisit that and come back to us.
And did they have a second proposal?
The next proposal we had was to have the ESP de-energized for 36 hours during the startup, which include the time where the catalyst was heated up using the heaters from room temperature to 750 degrees, as well as other periods.
Would that have resulted in significantly more emissions than the six-hour period listed here?
Yes, it would have.
What was the district's reaction to that proposal?
Again, we went through the steps one at a time and asked ExxonMobil to... Again, we went through the steps one at a time and asked ExxonMobil to revisit their proposal to evaluate what can they do to further minimize the emissions again without creating an unreasonable risk of explosion.
And what did they do in response to that?
After many meetings, we received confirmation from ExxonMobil that they are comfortable with only de-energizing the ESP during the six-hour period that torch oil is introduced into the regenerator.
Regarding the unmitigated excess emissions listed for PM and PM10, where do those emissions come from?
The PM emissions are primarily catalyst fines as the FCCU catalyst is fluidized and recirculated in the regenerator. It can generate small parts of the catalyst that will then fly with the exhaust air through the exhaust system and the stack. The diagram we were looking at before is actually not a very detailed diagram because within the regenerator, there actually are a couple of internal systems that are referred to cyclones, which do remove some of the particles as the exhaust passes through those cyclones. So some of the larger particles are removed by those cyclones, but some of the smaller particles from the catalyst will fly with the air and through the electrostatic precipitator. If it's not charged, it would not be collected fully and then out through the stack. But there is also a small portion of particulates that are typically products of combustion. So anytime you burn any kind of fuel, even natural gas, you form some small amounts of particles that also contribute to the overall excess particulate emissions.
Just briefly, what's the difference between PM and PM10?
As I mentioned before, PM refers to particulate matter, and it is all forms of solid liquid particles, whereas PM10 focuses on the much smaller particles, and those are the particles that are 10-microns or smaller in diameter. And just for comparison, human hair, which I don't have, typically is about 60 microns in diameter. So a 10-micron or smaller is typically not visible to the naked eye, so that's a very fine particle.
Would the proposed order require ExxonMobil to take steps to mitigate or offset the amount of PM and PM10 emissions?
Yes, it does.
I'd like to walk you through the chart. On the second line, all the way to the right, it says "from cooling towers retrofit." Do district rules currently require that refineries control PM emissions from cooling towers?
District has some requirements for cooling towers in terms of what kind of chemicals can be added to the cooling towers. Couple of decades ago or prior to that, a lot of the industrial processes, for example, used hexavalent chromium or chromium 6 as an additive to the cooling towers. So district has adopted rules and regulations that prevents the use of those additives in the cooling tower. And then the district also requires reporting of emissions from cooling towers as part of emission reports from each source that utilizes it. But other than that, there is no requirement relative to how much emissions can be coming from a cooling tower.
Did ExxonMobil retrofit its cooling towers?
Yes, ExxonMobil had plans to, again, the diagram we were looking at is not a very detailed diagram. Prior to construction of the new ESP that exploded in 2015, ExxonMobil operated a much smaller electrostatic precipitator. At that time, our agency adopted a regulation referred to as Rule 1150.1, which controls the fine particulate emissions from fluid catalytic cracking units. And the thresholds that were required in our rule were lower than efficiency of the old ESP that ExxonMobil had been using. Therefore, they installed the new ESP, which is, again, it's a very large unit, about five-story building, at a cost of about $300 million to remove much greater amount of particulates and meet the Rule 1150.1. The reason I'm saying that is because when ExxonMobil was shut down, FCC unit of ExxonMobil was shut down, and they were repairing the new ESP because of the period of time that it was taking first for the investigative agencies to go through the evidence and subsequent repair work. ExxonMobil had previously considered and approached us to use the old ESP by re-energizing it again, since it was never removed. It was in the duct system, and it was not energized, so it was serving as just a duct. And they wanted to use that in the interim while they're repairing the new ESP. And at that time, they were looking for how they can mitigate the emissions for that interim process. And so the cooling towers that are listed here was part of that proposal, that they would retrofit these cooling towers by replacing what's called a drift eliminator or drift eliminators within the cooling tower, which is almost like an air pollution control system for cooling towers. And that is because typically you have water and air in a cooling tower in order to reduce the temperature of the water and the solids in the water or in the solution are typically airborne when air and water contact. So there are particle emissions that are coming from cooling towers, which include some of the chemicals that are added to the water. And the drift eliminators are the type of, it's almost like trays within a cooling tower that will remove those particles. And since ExxonMobil's had five cooling towers that were installed several years ago, they offered to retrofit all these and install the new drift eliminators, which has much higher efficiency in removing particles.
So would that retrofit result in every direction in PM emissions?
Yes, it did result in the numbers that you see here in parentheses. And you always have a higher number or a larger number for PM than PM10, and that is because it includes all size particles, not just the fine particles. But as you can see, the amount of particulate reduction during this six-hour period where the regenerator is using torch oil and the ESP is not fully charged, which would be equivalent to 137 pounds of total PM and 96 pounds of PM10. But those are going to be reductions that, as you heard Mr. Gilchrist and Ms. Kielner both mentioned, that are permanent reduction, they're not just during those six hours.
So would those reductions that you talked about during that six-hour period, that would continue throughout the day that the ESP was shut down?
Throughout the day and longer, but yes, that's correct.
So the actual PM mitigations from the cooling towers for the entire period of the FCCU startup would be more than just the 137 pounds from this six-hour period, correct?
That's correct, at least four times more just during, I'm sorry, six times more, four times, yes, four times more during a 24-hour period and much longer if you go beyond that.
And would the proposed order require ExxonMobil to shut down coker heaters 21F7 and 22F3?
Yes, during the startup process, ExxonMobil will also not operate the two heaters listed here, which are used for coker, coker unit is another unit within the refinery that processes heavy liquid into lighter liquid. And they are proposing to, at minimum, have these two heaters down for several days, not just during the six-hour period that torch oil is used in the regenerator.
Has the district evaluated the amount of PM and PM10 for the six-hour period that will be mitigated because of shutting down these coker heaters?
Yes, again, the numbers that you see shown here on line three and four for heaters 21F7 and 22F3 shows that 25 pounds, which is 17 plus eight pounds of PM, and 23 pounds of PM10 will be reduced during that period. But again, these are only for the six-hour period. If these units are down several days, then those numbers would also be higher.
Would the proposed order also require that ExxonMobil limit its throughput during the startup period to 100,000 barrels a day?
Yes, ExxonMobil's capacity for this refinery, their refinery is around 150,000 barrels per day, and the average production or usage before they had the explosion was around 131. And the average production or usage before they had the explosion was around 131,000 barrels per day. So limiting the throughput to 100,000 is about a 25% curtailment during the FCCU startup. And by doing that, there are numerous heaters and boilers within the refinery that are used to process the crude, all the way from crude to gasoline and other fuel products. So by cutting down the throughput by 25%, you will reduce the emissions from all those heaters and boilers by approximately that 25% amount.
The bottom of the chart has a row labeled net, N-E-T. Do you see that?
Yes.
For PM and PM10, does that just refer to the six-hour period in which the ESPs will not be fully operational?
Correct. That's looking at the unmitigated excess emissions on the second line on the top and removing or deducting all the mitigations shown on lines three through seven. And again, it is for just those six hours, not any hours beyond that.
So it doesn't count for the fact that ExxonMobil would be required to continuously run its cooling towers during the startup period with the retrofits that would reduce PM and PM10 emissions, correct?
That's correct, as well as the other coker heater and the throughput that may be extended far beyond six hours.
So the actual net emissions would be less than what is listed here, correct?
That's correct.
Is it also possible that during the first day, there would actually be a net reduction in total PM emissions?
For the 24 hours, yes.
And for the period, the subsequent periods during the startup, would there also likely be a net actual reduction in the amount of PM and PM emissions?
Yes, those reductions or mitigations, as I mentioned, will continue beyond 24 hours as well.
If you look at the row regarding CO, what does CO stand for again?
CO is carbon monoxide. It's a colorless, odorless, tasteless gas that everyone is familiar with, that you have a CO monitor in your homes to make sure that any combustion source, including gasoline heaters or ovens or stoves, are not putting out unburned carbon monoxide, which is a poisonous gas in the air.
Has the district evaluated the amount of unmitigated excess emissions that it believes would occur?
Yes, for CO, as I mentioned earlier, the reason there is excess emissions, it's not that there is an actual evidence that there will be excess emissions, but because the burning of torch oil is not a very homogenized process, where you can be certain that all the torch oil is burned immediately as it is introduced into the regenerator. There may be some incomplete combustion that will carry some of the unburned products of combustion, such as carbon monoxide through the exhaust.
Would the proposed order require that ExxonMobil mitigate CO, excess emissions by performing online burner tip cleaning of 15 burners during the startup period?
The order actually, and discussions that we had with ExxonMobil, that was proposed by ExxonMobil. The reason we did not put this in as a mitigation, because it was not readily verifiable of how much reduction will occur when they clean the tip of a burner. But it does generally result in better combustion in other devices, so it should reduce CO emissions, but we just couldn't quantify it.
So because we couldn't quantify it, there's no listing there for mitigation, correct?
That's correct.
And again, what does that NOx stand for?
NOx is for nitrogen oxides. And the reason it's X is because there are different compounds of nitrogen oxides. The most common is nitrogen dioxide or NO2, but there is nitrous oxide and other forms of nitrogen oxides. In general, nitrogen oxide is a pollutant that is formed during combustion processes. And there are two sources of nitrogen oxide. One is if there is any nitrogen in the fuel that is being burned, or any type of material that is being burned. And because in order to burn the material, you have to have air, the oxygen in the air and nitrogen in the material that is being burned can form nitrogen oxides. But the most common form of nitrogen oxide formation is called thermal NOx, which means as a result of a high temperature, when you have both nitrogen and oxygen, which are both components of air, atmospheric air, exposed to high temperatures, they also form nitrogen oxides.
Under the column for NOx, next to coker heater 21F7 and 22F3, there are numbers listed there. Those, what do those numbers represent?
The 53 pounds for coker heater 21F7 and 77 pounds for coker heater 22F3 represent the amount of nitrogen oxides that would have been formed if those two heaters are operating during the six-hour period that the ESP is deenergized.
For, I'm asking you about NOx, so would it be the 12-hour period that the ESR is not operating?
Actually, you're right. All the pollutants, the comparison was for six hours except for NOx. For NOx, we used a 12-hour period. So those 53 and 77 pounds refer to a 12-hour period that those two coker heaters are not operating.
Regarding the mitigated NOx emissions that would occur from shutting down those coker heaters over that 12-hour period, would those NOx reductions continue beyond that 12-hour period?
They will. And again, as I mentioned earlier, those coker heaters will be shut down for a number of days during the startup. So it will be exceeding those numbers that are listed here. However, for the sake of comparison, we wanted to make sure, since the unmitigated excess emissions of 467 pounds was during the same 12 hours, we wanted to show what would be contemporaneously reduced during the same 12 hours.
But the actual NOx mitigations from reducing throughout the entire period would be more than just what's listed there, correct?
That's correct. Nonetheless, we also are requiring ExxonMobil to retire some of their reclaimed trading credits or RTCs for nitrogen oxides equivalent to 337 pounds during this order of abatement period. However, I do want to point out that regardless of retiring those RTCs at the end of the reconciliation period, which means at the end of the year, when they report their NOx emissions, all of those nitrogen oxide emissions, including the 337 pounds that they have already retired RTCs, needs to be again accounted for by providing RTCs at the end of the year.
Okay. Just briefly, Mr. Mizumi, could you please give a relatively brief description of what the reclaim program is and a brief description of what RTCs or reclaimed trade credits are?
Sure. Reclaim stands for Regional Cleaner Incentives Market. It was a program that the district adopted in 1993, and we have been implementing this program for the past 22 years. This is a cap and trade program where each of the 300-plus facilities at the time that were in this program were given an allocation for each facility that would be subject to an annual reduction. And in return for those allocations, the facility, and because they were declining each year, the facilities had to either control their own emissions or purchase credits from other facilities who may have controlled their emissions earlier or beyond what's In terms of other provisions of reclaim, in terms of getting this flexibility, there was a much more stringent monitoring, reporting and reporting requirement imposed on facilities who participated in this program. And one of those is the continuous emission monitoring system. Over 80% of all the NOx emissions in the reclaim program are actually measured on a continuous basis. So it's a much more reliable way of knowing how much emissions are going into the air compared to just doing a source test every so often. And as part of this program, then at the end of each year, each facility has to have enough reclaimed trading credits or allocations, whether they got it originally or purchased it in the open market, to cover their own emissions. And beyond that, we also require them that for each quarter, they have to have enough emissions to cover their quarterly emissions. So the RTCs are those reclaimed trading credits, and they are traded in the open market. The district does not own them, but they, these are the credits that any party, including an investor, can purchase and sell.
You mentioned two terms that I'd like to ask you a little bit more about. First, I'd like to ask you about source tests. And second, you mentioned continuous emissions monitoring. And second, you mentioned continuous emissions monitoring systems. What are source tests?
Source test is a term that we use to refer to a process where typically you measure emissions that are coming out of a stack. And the way to do that is you typically put a probe into this stack or a line and pull the emissions that are coming from that stack into a line and then capture it either on a filter or run it through numerous pieces of equipment and that can then measure the various pollutants that are present in that exhaust stream. Source tests are snapshots of emissions. And the difference between a source test and the continuous emission monitoring system or SAMs is that a continuous emission monitoring system is measuring the emissions on a continuous basis, even in fractions of less than one minute at a time.
And I believe you mentioned earlier that source tests would be conducted during the abatement period, during the startup period pursuant to the proposed order. Is that right?
Right. In addition to the continuous emission monitoring systems that ExxonMobil has in their stack, they would also be conducting source tests to measure the particulates and other pollutants.
Regarding the continuous emission monitoring systems in Exxon stack, what does that measure? What do those SAMs measure?
For the FCC unit, an ESP exhaust stack, ExxonMobil measures nitrogen oxides, sulfur oxides. They measure carbon monoxide. And they also measure other parameters such as oxygen level in the stack.
And those would be in place during the proposed abatement period?
Yes, they will all be in place.
That would be measuring those potential emissions?
That's correct. Throughout the whole unit startup.
I have no further questions at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Miss, any other questions for Mr. Nizimi?
I think I just have one clarifying question on the chart that you have produced, exhibit three. Just to clarify, when you look at the particulate matter PM in the first column and particulate matter of 10 microns or less in the second column, when you are looking at total emissions from the six hour period, we don't add those together to get the total. Is that correct?
That's correct. As I mentioned earlier, PM refers to all particles, whether they're 10 microns or smaller or larger. And out of the total PM, the numbers that are listed in the third column PM and are what fraction of the total PM is PM2. So you don't have them together. That's correct.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. On the mitigations that go down the last column, do, are those real? Quantifiable with the exception of that I'm going to talk about the actions that ExxonMobil is taking affirmatively, the cooling towers, the coker heater shutdowns, and the crude, the limits on the crude throughput. Are those real, quantifiable, and enforceable?
Yes, those are emissions that are real and they are going to be enforced through this order of abatement if it does get approved today. And they have been quantified, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nizimi. No further questions.
Okay. First question I have, and you may already have covered it in exhibit number three. The unmitigated emissions for NOx are listed as 467 pounds for the, and that was for the six hours of when the ESPs are not fully energized?
They're for six hours for PM, PM10, and CO. And then 12 hours for NOx.
Okay. On page six. The proposed findings and decision that was filed, date stamped March 30th, 2016, that will be marked as the next exhibit for the district. And that would be number four. Okay, so on exhibit number four, page six, line 12, it shows 143 pounds of NOx unmitigated emissions, total unmitigated emissions. What's the difference?
I believe that number is not correct.
So the higher number is the correct number, the 467 that appears on page, on exhibit three?
No, the, maybe I should explain the footnote in this exhibit is probably more explanatory than what the numbers that you see on this page. If you add up the numbers, what, what the unmitigated refers to should be prior to any mitigation. And therefore, the 143 pounds in condition 30 on page six should actually be 467. And I think that, if I can consult with my counselor here, I think that was an error.
We're off the record.
Will we go back on the record, Mr. Chair?
We're on the record.
I believe the reason the number is different, and again, the correct number should be 467, not 143. When these conditions were originally drafted, information that was provided to us, and we looked at the NOx emissions, we initially looked at the 30 day prior to the February 18, 2015 explosion. And those were the numbers. Subsequent to putting this number down, I wanted to actually look at a much longer period to see if there was something different during those 30 days compared to typical operations. So then we looked at almost a one year period. And when we looked at a one year period, that number went up. So the 467 is the correct number that should be in condition 30.
Okay. Looking at exhibit three again, this time for, with respect to the two cokers. These are new ESPs. When were the new ESPs installed and started up?
The new ESP, I believe it was in 2008. And there was a period of transition, maybe 2008 to 2009, where originally it was installed. And then when the explosion occurred in February of 2015, it went down and has not been operated since.
Okay. So there was some emission reductions as a result of starting up these new ESPs in 2008?
As a result of the continued use of the ESPs, yes, that was to comply with our much more stringent PM limits in our Rule 1150.1.
Now, we're here today starting up the ESPs after the repairs. And will there be using new catalysts or the same catalyst that was there before?
Okay, Marina, the ESP doesn't use a catalyst. It's electrostatic precipitator where they charge the particles with the electrodes as it goes into the unit. And with the negative charge and then the plates that are in the unit where the air goes through these plates is positively charged and removes the particles. As a result of the explosion, there was significant damage to the plates as well as some structural damage inside the ESP. So ExxonMobil has replaced, rather than tried to reuse some of the existing plates. They decided to just go ahead and replace all of the plates. And again, I believe there is more than 1,000 plates in that large ESP. And they also have to do some significant structural repair within the structure of the ESP. So it is almost like an overhauled, brand-new ESP.
I understand that.
Maybe I missed a question, sorry.
Perhaps I didn't ask it properly. But you have new catalysts, do you not? The dust that-
Oh, I'm sorry. You mean the catalyst inside the FCCU, not ESP. The proposal is, well, when FCCU operates, you continuously add fresh catalyst to the unit. However, fresh catalyst typically has a lot more fines or small particles within it. What we have required ExxonMobil to do during this startup is to use what's referred to as equilibrium catalyst, which is a catalyst that has already been run through this system. And all the fines have been removed with the air and probably with the ESP. And so it is not fresh, quote-unquote catalyst. It's equilibrium catalyst.
But you're starting up the process. And the coker heaters are not going to be operating. Why, at this point in the process, do you have any catalysts that you need to burn off the coke from?
Actually, that's a very good question. During the startup of the FCCU, one of the purposes of the regenerator is when the unit is operating in full mode, the unit is operating in full mode, the, the oil that is introduced into the reactor, in the presence of the catalysts, are processed into the fractionation column, and the catalysts then are coated with what's called carbon in, in the unit, and then they are returned to the regenerator unit when, in that unit, the coke is burned off the catalysts. So if your question is during the startup, are they burning coke off the catalyst? The answer is no. There is, there is none at this point, because all they're doing is they're heating up the catalyst and starting to recirculate it. They have not yet introduced any fuel into the reactor.
So the question then is, are the reductions shown, the mitigations shown for the coker heaters real, since they would have, not have been operated anyway?
So the way we look at this, Mr. Camerino, is to compare what would the refinery be normally operating, allowed to operate under, and what would the emissions be under those circumstances compared to a startup process? So under normal operation, yes, those coker units would be operating, there would be emissions associated with those. However, during the startup, they will not turn those on, and therefore, those would be reductions or mitigations.
But they wouldn't have been turned on anyway?
I would...
It's like not doing what you weren't going to do.
No, I, I appreciate your question, and maybe it's a better question for ExxonMobil's witness, but when we talk about the refinery being shut down, the refinery was not completely shut down, and it's fact that has been operating at somewhere in the 15% to 20% capacity since the incident. So a number of these units are operating, and coker unit refers not to the FCCU, but a different unit, I'm sorry, a coker heater. So maybe that's a good question to ask ExxonMobil witness, but I believe these are other units that are not necessarily related to the FCCU that were operating under normal conditions.
How accurate are the mitigation estimates? How much confidence can we put in them?
Each one of them were calculated differently. The heater emissions were based on actual source tests, so they are very, very reliable numbers. The cooling tower emissions were based on comparing what the old cooling tower emissions were. However, typically, cooling towers are not sourced, so we use emission factors that are being approved and used by USCPA and other regulatory agencies for an old ESP, I'm sorry, for an old cooling tower. And then to compare what the emission reductions would be, we utilize what the drift eliminator manufacturer guaranteed, that the new drift eliminators will reduce the PM emissions or PM10 emissions, too. So those were the estimates used for the cooling towers. As far as the crude limit of 100,000, again, we looked at what all of the units that would operate when the refineries operating at the average crude throughput of 131,000 barrels per day would emit. And then if that is cut by 25%, what the amount of reductions would result from this? And those are pretty accurate, because again, most if not all of those heaters and boilers have been tested before, so there are hard source testing information that shows how much particulate emissions were coming from them.
My experience is that over the years, refinery startups have resulted in fewer and fewer excess emissions during the startup as a result of improvements in the startup procedure, technologies, et cetera. How do the excess emissions in this startup that you're projecting compare to excess emissions in startups of other refineries, or even this refinery in recent history?
If we look at just the six-hour period where the ESP is de-energized, obviously, the emissions will be higher just for those six hours from this startup compared to another refinery that does maintain the ESP energized during that six hours. But because of all these other provisions and requirements in the Order of Abatement and mitigations that refinery is offering, when you look at it from an overall standpoint, actually, this is very comparable to the other refinery startups.
Have you done any calculations to determine whether the excess emissions that are expected as a result of the startup as it is proposed will result in exceedances of the ambient air quality standards?
Yes, we have looked at the excess emissions from two angles, both particulates and NOx. As you well know, there are emission, sorry, national and state ambient quality standards for both PM10 and PM2.5. There is also standards for NO2. Our analysis showed that during the six hours where the ESP is not fully energized, the emissions do not exceed the NACS or ambient air quality standards by themselves. However, as you probably know well, that this whole region is not attainment for both PM10 and PM2.5. So we are already declared as not attainment. And therefore, this is not going to cause or create a new violation, even if it did exceed the national ambient quality standards. So we did analyze that and found that there are some, some impacts, but the impact alone is not anywhere near the standard.
It's about 1:40 right now. The board is going to 11:40 a.m. Saturday. The board will take its lunch recess, reconvene at approximately 12:30 p.m.